Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Beverly City Council Monday, May 23 at 6:00 PM. And did want to acknowledge that our outside council, Mr. Ramires, is joining us via remote participation today, calling in due to illness. So you'll be able to hear him through Ms. Kent's microphone. Ms. Kent, would you please call the roll?
Bowen?
Here.
Crowley?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
Hausmann?
Rand?
Here.
Rotundo?
Here.
St. Holier?
Here.
Sweeney?
Here.
And Flowers?
Here. Thank you very much. Counselor Rotundo, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Counselor Rotundo. I do want to also acknowledge that in the room with us, in addition to members of National Grid's team, members of the public, we also have our Mayor Cahill's constituent services director, Ms. Ronnie Jacobson, and Assistant Solicitor Beth Oldmixon also here with us in the chambers. Thank you for being here. I would entertain a motion to take our agenda out of order so that we can take care of the one other item of business. Actually, I remembered something. Thank you, Ms. Kent. She sent me a telepathic message. We need to open our 6 o'clock public hearing on Order Number 65, a continuation of the hearing on National Grid New England Power Company petition for a transmission line franchise. And so that we can take up one other quick piece of business, I would entertain a motion to recess this hearing to 6:05.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries 8-0, so we'll recess that public hearing. Sorry. To 6:05. And now I would entertain a motion to take the agenda out of order so that we could go to communications, applications, and petitions.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries 8-0, so we'll take up that Order Number 155, Ms. Kent.
Order Number 155 from Addie Schuffler for the Beverly Farmers Market. Do you need me to read it? Or?
Thank you. No, I don't think we need to read the whole letter. Counselor Rand?
Thank you, President Flowers. I'm going to refuse myself because of my involvement with the market.
Thank you, Counselor Rand. We'll send someone for you when we're done with this one. So, councilors, you received this with your agenda for this evening's meeting, but basically this is a routine yearly request from the Beverly Farmers Market to be able to open for business. They use public land, and so that's why the request comes before us. And so we need to decide if we're going to approve this request so that the market can open. And their opening date is slated, assuming it's approved, for June 6, which is why we're taking it up this evening and not leaving it for our June 6 meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve the request.
So moved.
Second?
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries 7-0. Yes, Counselor Rotundo, would you please get Counselor Rand back? Thank you. So if Ms. Schruffler is watching or listening on Bev KM with us, we can let her know that the Beverly Farmers Market's application is approved. And Ms. Kent, you'll be in touch with Ms. Schruffler about that so they can get started. Great. Welcome back, Counselor Rand.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Kim, you're laughing because I need to tell a joke for one minute. Hello, Counselor Hausmann. This brings us to the time when we can pick up our 6:05 hearing on Order Number 65, National Grid New England Power Company petition for a transmission line franchise. This has been continued from our last meeting. And the purposes of our special meeting this evening, I am going to turn it over to Mr. Ramirez in a moment, who, as I said, joining us via remote participation due to illness. Councilors and members of the public, you will be able to hear him through Ms. Kent's microphone. It is likely that, especially for councilors sitting farther to my left and right, he may not hear you as clearly. So I will repeat councilors' questions or comments as needed so that we can make sure he is able to hear well. Our intent for the meeting this evening is primarily to have this conversation with Mr. Ramirez and to be able to begin to think about next steps in the process and what that might look like. And what I'd like to do is hold this meeting to two hours, less if it takes us less time, but to make sure that every counselor has the opportunity to take, to share insight or thoughts that you may have about next steps in the process. And we'll go from there. But first, I'd like to open it up to Mr. Ramirez. If you want to give us your sense of what's next in the process and what you're looking for from the council this evening in terms of direction.
Okay. Thank you, President Flowers. And thank you all, to all of the councilors, for indulging me. We've had COVID run through our entire family. And while I'm on the mend, I'm still testing positive, so I didn't think it was such a great idea to come to Beverly to infect you all. The, at the last session of the public hearing, it was announced that you were not going to take further testimony and that you were going to move to consider the matters before you while not closing the hearing. And the reason for not closing the hearing is that as we, as you deliberate, it may become apparent that there is a piece of information, or more than one piece of information, that you may wish to have in your record. And by leaving the hearing open, it's possible to make that request. But to be clear, this is not an opportunity for general comment to the extent that it is necessary to ask a question of a member of the public or one of National Grid's representatives. You're free to do so, and those responses can be part of the record. But the, in the main, the information gathering part of this session is now at an end. What I'm hoping will happen in the course of the next two hours is that the council will adopt a motion instructing us to prepare a decision. And that might be a decision to approve the project with conditions, or it may be a decision to disapprove the project. If it is a project, if it is a motion to approve the project with conditions, whatever guidance you can give us about what you'd like to see in those conditions would, of course, be very helpful. And to that end, our office prepared a list of subject areas for potential conditions that derive from the discussion that we have had so far and the documents that have been submitted so far. If you, I provided that to the clerk and suggested that that might be a handout at today's meeting. So I'm hoping that there are copies available to all the councilors.
Yes. Or, councilors, you received it in your email from Ms. Kent as well.
Okay.
Does everyone have a copy that you can look at at this time?
Okay. So you should all feel free to rely on that list as much as you wish, or as little as you wish, or not at all. You are the decision-makers here and not us, but I just thought it might be useful to you to have an idea of the kinds of things that you might want to consider, including as conditions. So I would suggest that the best way to proceed is for each of the councilors to take an opportunity to say what conditions they think are essential to an approval, or whether they believe that regardless of how it's conditioned, the matter should be disapproved. And then at some point, that will evolve into a, an actual motion with an instruction to us. With that instruction, should probably include something that says when you need the draft back. We're always glad to have more time, but I recognize that we're trying to fit your schedule, not yours to ours. So if you could just let us know when you would like to consider a draft next, we will do our very best to get that draft to you in time before that. Okay? So that's what I, what I hope will get accomplished today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ramirez. That's helpful. So, councilors, I'd like to open it up for, before I sort of move through, as I said, giving each councilor a chance to share, as Mr. Ramirez was just suggesting, what concerns or conditions you may be thinking about. Are there any questions process-wise about what Mr. Ramirez just said? I'll start there if anyone has a question. Counselor Hausmann?
Yeah, just a quick question. So the idea, if I understand him correctly, is we would discuss if the council is inclined to go towards conditions, approval with conditions. We would discuss those conditions and with as much generality or specifications as we can, but that he would then convert what we say of desired conditions into more specific language, which we would then review for approval. Is that correct?
Mr. Ramirez, the question, I'll just restate it, was Counselor Hausmann was just checking his understanding that the idea of this time is that councilors would suggest conditions in as general or specific senses they may have them, were there to be an approval, and that you and your staff then would make those conditions into the finished document, which we would then review and deliberate on.
We'll call it a proposed finished document, because obviously the councilors may want to make additional revisions to the draft. Yes.
Counselor Hausmann, does that, does that help to clarify?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Any other questions, just process-wise, for Mr. Ramirez at this time? If not, Counselor Rotundo, I saw your hand, so we'll go to you first.
Question more on the MOU. I know that the MOU from 2020. Is there any update on that? Has that been discussed with the leadership or with the attorney? I mean, so we're seeing things, but I don't want to be redundant on certain things either.
The question was, Mr. Ramirez, the MOU is obviously an older document, and are there any updates that have already been discussed with you or your staff on renegotiating the MOU? Am I phrasing that?
We have not been part of any such discussions. What I understand may be going on is that the cost of road repaving may need to be readjusted to reflect the fact that construction costs are higher today than they were when the MOU was entered into. But I have not been part of any of those discussions, and so I don't have any information to provide about that.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Do you have a follow-up?
Just a quick follow-up. And then, any conditions we put, if it's deviated from the MOU, will be adjusted in the MOU?
This is probably a good time to ask this question, because I see Solicitor Williams has also joined us. So I'm going to, if it's okay, I'll restate Solicitor Williams for your hearing as well, Counselor Rotundo's questions combined. The first being, with the MOU between the city and National Grid, the original document is now an older document, and is there any work, or has there been work underway between the city and National Grid to revise that? And his second follow-up was, if, if not, is it fair to say that any conditions councilors may suggest that would change the MOU would result in a revision of the MOU to match the conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the answer to your first question is that the MOU has not been amended. It is my understanding, and I wasn't part of the conversation, that the mayor's office had reached out to at least one National Grid representative requesting or asking if they would amend the MOU to agree that along the entire route, they would install the line in a delta configuration. And I believe thus far, his office has not received a response to that request, but I I'm not, I don't believe that there were any other, there may have been one other item, although it's not coming to mind right now. As far as whether or not it would result in an amendment to the MOU, if it's different, I suppose, you know, it could, depending on what it is. The MOU certainly recognizes the city council's authority to issue the permit or not, and I think there's a recognition that, you know, the MOU in some instances may not control. I think we'd have to look at that kind of on a case-by-case basis. I don't know, Ray, if you have thoughts about that.
Yeah, the one thing I would want to be very cautious about is putting a condition here in the, in an approval that says, "We recognize that under the MOU, you owe X dollars, but we want X plus Y dollars." Full stop. That, I think, places us in a, in a sort of awkward position, that a good-faith negotiation over the cost of these activities was negotiated, and then we came and sort of swooped in at the last minute and said, "No, it should be some different amount." If there is a specific paving requirement that we want to include in the conditions that is not mentioned in the MOU, I'd feel more comfortable with that. But just asking for or requiring the payment of additional money beyond what is negotiating the MOU seems to me to put us in a little bit of a shaky position.
Right. So Attorney Ramirez, would it be appropriate, though, to ask for revised, and that from National Grid, I mean, this, this number that they, we agreed to is three years old or two years old? And so it seems to me that a minimum, there should be at least the present-day value of that amount.
I think if, I was speaking to the, to the situation where the MOU was, in fact, revised to reflect that. If we find ourselves in the situation where the MOU is not revised, then I think it is appropriate for a condition to be written to suggest that that price tag needs to be revised. And whether it's just a straight cost of living revision or a requirement that the actual cost be reimbursed or something, we can, we can mull that over a bit. I just don't think it's a good idea, if the MOU, in fact, is renegotiated, to then come back and say, "Okay, the mayor and the National Grid have agreed that this is the appropriate price, but we want more."
Counselor Rotundo, do you have a follow-up?
More, I guess I'm a little confused. Is he saying that we shouldn't be looking for a revision due to the increase of cost of goods, even though that the original contract says $2.75 million currently? But if we're looking to negotiate, and it's agreed upon between National Grid and, say, the mayor's office, that it comes at $3 million? I don't know. I mean, I'll pull whatever figure. I'm going to go with the expertise of our DPS director. Is he saying not to do that, that it would not be advisable? So I'm just trying to get, gather that. I'm not quite understanding what he's saying, is that we shouldn't be asking for that?
I think, I'm gonna, I'm going to try restating. Mr. Ramirez, tell me if this captures what you were saying.
Okay.
Counselor Rotundo is asking if you're suggesting we shouldn't be asking for a revised MOU based on increased cost? And I think what Mr. Ramirez is saying is that it is completely fair to revise the cost, and that if there is not a revision made between the mayor's office and National Grid, the council could write a condition that would instruct such a revision be worked on. But if we're presented with a revision, I believe he's saying his suggestion is that if we're presented with a revision that's been worked out in the present day, that writing a condition that just adds on an amount to that wouldn't be as strong a condition. Is that an accurate reflection of what you said?
I think, I think that's good. Yes.
Is that helpful, Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you.
Counselor Sweeney, and then we'll go to Counselor Hausmann.
Counselor Rotundo summarized the line of questioning, which is essentially, that's a priority area of mine as well. And I know National Grid, at our previous meeting, had verbally agreed to work with the city on that end. So whatever vehicle makes the most sense, whether it's revising the MOU or adding a condition, so long as we are able to revise that number accordingly.
Thank you, Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you.
Counselor Hausmann?
I found with you talking in that direction with your mask on, I couldn't quite get everything. But if I can summarize, we can amend the MOU, there's a way to do it. It's just according to the advice that Mr. Ramirez is giving us that that might occur. Is that correct?
Yes. Mr. Ramirez, Counselor Hausmann is just confirming that we, the MOU can be revised. There is a way to do it. It's just according to the advice that you just gave us, the sort of best practice on that.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I think at this point, are there, are there councilors who would like to have the opportunity now to weigh in about conditions or thoughts that you have about this process for Mr. Ramirez to take under advisement as he's working with us? Counselor Rand?
Thank you so much. This is both exciting and also a little nerve-wracking to be nearing sort of the end of this public process that you've really recreated for, I think, the council and our community, President Flowers. So thank you for that. I think most of my focus on sort of my wishes for conditions are centered around communication and of a really, a very high level of communication. I guess one detail that I want to sort of point out in particular is I would like to see a direct outreach for the interior pre-construction videos rather than the more passive approach of kind of, which I think it's great to have an option, but there's, the approach right now is sort of a bit more passive of opting in through a communication you might receive by mail or email or newsletter. So I'd like there to be a direct outreach, a phone call to, and I know that sounds like a lot, but it is, and so that people can have the opportunity to say, "Yes, I would like that. No, I don't want that," rather than kind of having things get lost in the mail or in an inbox. So that's one very specific thing I would like to see in our conditions. The other thing that I've really been thinking a lot about is how all of the conditions that we can apply and that are sort of in front of us, that we've been thinking over, are, are great. I think they're only as good as they will be if those things are being properly communicated along the route. So it's my understanding that the project aims to work at about two, in 200 feet increments. And so what I'm looking for is to kind of incorporate a requirement that really has constituents being communicated with, including businesses, at those 200 feet increments. So whether it's 200 feet of paving or digging or putting in cable, and this is all if, if we are engaged, if we pass this, right? But these are the conditions I would like to see if this passes. So really thinking about the 200 feet increments, and I know that can change while construction is happening, depending on what's found, ledge, what have you. So I want that applied to basically each condition we list. So within that communication, I want those 200 feet of constituents and the full council to know that we hit ledge, or we had to, it's going to take a day longer, or we're working 20 feet less, or, you know, we're staging. I want that communication to include, "We're staging and storing here." Most often, businesses, especially downtown, are really affected, not even so much by the construction, but right now, you see it on Cabot Street, there, and, and on Abbott Street today even, people are affected by the staging of the construction as much as the construction. So I think that needs to be a really strong piece of the communication. And then just to sort of add, I think that, hopefully that makes sense. I'm open to clarifying. I'd like to just add one more sort of level to communication. I'd like there to be a video component that we could share with constituents or post on, you know, the city's website for sort of the more visual learners, people who don't necessarily have, you know, just another way to reach people. So a video kind of summary of that same communication. And actually, I lied. There's one more last thing that I was thinking. Another request I would like to make for communication is that to have the ability to translate all communication easily into a first language, if that's different than English. I tried to really narrow it down.
I'm just, I'm just narrowing it down because I'm going to restate them for Mr. Ramirez. And I'm also just had a thought while Counselor Rand was talking. The reason that Mr. Ramirez can't hear councilors further from me as well is because it's, the sound from him is coming out through Lisa's, Ms. Kent's microphone, sorry, Ms. Kent, and the sound going in is coming in through the laptop only. So I might suggest, councilors, potentially, Ms. Kent, if you don't mind, if councilors, when it's their turn to speak, if they could come and just sit in your seat?
Might be better than...
I think that might work best. So, councilors, if that's okay. Mr. Ramirez also, of course, will be able to have access to Ms. Dixon's excellent minutes from this. But I'll just summarize Counselor Rand's suggested conditions. They're all around communication at a very high level. They included direct outreach for interior pre-construction videos as opposed to the passive approach, and Counselor Rand, please correct me if I misstate anything, as opposed to the more passive approach of sending emails or requiring an opt-in on a website, but instead a direct outreach that might look like a phone call or direct conversation at addresses so that people don't miss an invitation to opt-in. And so an active chance for people essentially to opt out rather than have to find their way to opt in. Counselor Rand also noted that all conditions, any conditions that might be applied to a project that this are only as good as the communication to allow residents and businesses on the route to know about them. And she referenced the planned rate of about 200-foot increments working along this path of the project, and talked about wanting to incorporate a requirement that finds constituents, residents, and businesses notified about any updates or changes, any communication that might go out, going out in these 200-foot sort of requirements, so that if there's an update, like, "We've hit ledge, we're staging or storing in this area," there's a delay that that's being residents and businesses along that 200-foot sort of span where the work is happening or being updated. And also, she talked about a video component that could be shared on the website that would essentially take any written communication and create a video component that could be distributed by councilors to constituents, put on the city website, and that would be less dependent on just one type of taking in information, reading text, that this would be another way to ensure that residents can access the information and to translate all communication into at least one other language if a resident or business owner's first language is not English. Did I capture those?
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. President Flowers, I wonder if I could direct a question to Mr. Riley?
Increase of cost of goods, even though that the original contract says 2.75 million currently. But if we're looking to negotiate and it's agreed upon between National Grid and say, the mayor's office, that it comes at $3 million. I don't know, I mean, I'll pull whatever figure. I'm going to go with the expertise of our DPS director. Is he saying not to do that, that it would not be advisable? So I'm just trying to get, gather that. I'm not quite understanding what he's saying. Is that we shouldn't be asking for that?
I think, I'm gonna, I'm going to try restating, Mr. Marius, tell me if this captures what you were saying.
Okay.
Counselor Rattendo is asking if you're suggesting we shouldn't be asking for a revised MOU based on increased cost. And I think what Mr. Marius is saying is that it is completely fair to revise the cost, and that if there is not a revision made between the mayor's office and National Grid, the council could write a condition that would instruct such a revision be worked on. But if we're presented with a revision, I believe he's saying his suggestion is that if we're presented with a revision that's been worked out in the present day, that writing a condition that just adds on an amount to that wouldn't be as strong a condition. Is that an accurate reflection of what you said?
I think, I think that's good, yes.
All right.
Is that helpful, Counselor Rattendo?
Thank you.
Counselor Sweeney, and then we'll go to Counselor Hausmann.
Counselor Rattendo summarized the line of questioning, which is essentially, that's a priority area of mine as well. And I know National Grid at our previous meeting had verbally agreed to work with the city on that end. So whatever vehicle makes the most sense, whether it's revising the MOU or adding a condition, so long as we are able to revise that number accordingly.
Thank you, Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you.
Counselor Hausmann.
I found with you talking in that direction with your mask on, I couldn't quite get everything. But if I can summarize, we can amend the MOU, there's a way to do it. It's just according to the advice that Mr. Marius is giving us, that that might occur. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Marius, Counselor Hausmann is just confirming that we, the MOU can be revised. There is a way to do it. It's just according to the advice that you just gave us, the sort of best practice on that.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I think at this point, are there, are there counselors who would like to have the opportunity now to weigh in about conditions or thoughts that you have about this process for Mr. Marius to take under advisement as he's working with us? Counselor Rand.
Thank you so much. This is both exciting and also a little nerve-wracking to be nearing sort of the end of this public process that you've really recreated for, I think, the council and our community, President Flowers. So thank you for that. I think most of my focus on sort of my wishes for conditions are centered around communication and of a really, a very high level of communication. I guess one detail that I want to sort of point out in particular is I would like to see a direct outreach for the interior pre-construction videos, rather than the more passive approach of kind of, which I think it's great to have an option, but there's, the approach right now is sort of a bit more passive of opting in through a communication you might receive by mail or email or newsletter. So I'd like there to be a direct outreach, a phone call to, and I know that sounds like a lot, but it is, and so that people can have the opportunity to say, yes, I would like that, no, I don't want that, rather than kind of having things get lost in the mail or in an inbox. So that's one very specific thing I would like to see in our conditions. The other thing that I've really been thinking a lot about is how all of the conditions that we can apply and that are sort of in front of us that we've been thinking over are, are great. I think they're only as good as they will be if those things are being properly communicated along the route. So it's my understanding that the project aims to work at about two, in 200 feet increments. And so what I'm looking for is to kind of incorporate a requirement that really has a, has constituents being communicated with, including businesses, at those 200 feet increments. So whether it's 200 feet of paving, or digging, or putting in cable, and this is all if, if we are engaged, if we pass this, right? But these are the conditions I would like to see if this passes. So really thinking about the 200 feet increments, and I know that can change while construction is happening, depending on what's found, ledge, what have you. So I want that applied to basically each condition we list. So within that communication, I, I want those 200 feet of constituents and the full council to know that we hit ledge, or we had to, it's going to take a day longer, or we're working 20 feet less, or, you know, we're staging. I want that communication to include, we're staging and storing here. Most often, businesses, especially downtown, are really affected, not even so much by the construction, but right now you see it on Cabot Street, there, and, and on Abbott Street today even, people are affected by the staging of the construction as much as the construction. So I think that needs to be a really strong piece of the communication. And then just to sort of add, I think that, hopefully that makes sense. I'm open to clarifying. I'd like to just add one more sort of level to communication. I'd like there to be a, a video component that we could share with constituents or post on, you know, the city's website for sort of the more visual learners, people who don't necessarily have, you know, just another way to reach people. So a video kind of summary of that same communication. And the, actually, I lied. There's one more last thing that I was thinking. Another request I would like to make for a communication is that to have the ability to translate all communication easily into a first language, if that's different than English. I tried to really narrow it down.
I, I just, I'm just narrowing it down because I'm going to restate them for Mr. Marius.
Okay.
And I'm also just had a thought while Counselor Rand was talking. The reason that Mr. Marius can't hear counselors further from me as well is because it's, the sound from him is coming out through Lisa's, Ms. Kent's microphone, sorry, Ms. Kent. And the sound going in is coming in through the laptop only. So I might suggest counselors potentially, Ms. Kent, if you don't mind, if counselors, when it's their turn to speak, if they could come and just sit in your seat.
Might be better than.
I think that might work best. So counselors, if that's okay. Mr. Marius also, of course, will be able to have access to Ms. Dixon's excellent minutes from this. But I'll just summarize Counselor Rand's suggested conditions. They're all around communication at a very high level. They included direct outreach for interior pre-construction videos as opposed to the passive approach, and Counselor Rand, please correct me if I misstate anything, as opposed to the more passive approach of sending emails or requiring an opt-in on a website, but instead a direct outreach that might look like a phone call or direct conversation at addresses, so that people don't miss an invitation to opt-in. And so an active chance for people essentially to opt out, rather than have to find their way to opt in. Counselor Rand also noted that all conditions, any conditions that might be applied to a project like this are only as good as the communication to allow residents and businesses on the route to know about them. And she referenced the planned rate of about 200-foot increments working along this path of the project, and talked about wanting to incorporate a requirement that finds constituents, residents, and businesses notified about any updates or changes, any communication that might go out, going out in these 200-foot sort of requirements. So that if there's an update, like we've hit ledge, we're staging or storing in this area, there's a delay, that that's being residents and businesses along that 200-foot sort of span where the work is happening or being updated. And also, she talked about a video component that could be shared and, on the website, that would essentially take any written communication and create a, a video component that could be distributed by counselors to constituents, put on the city website, and that would be less dependent on just one type of taking in information, reading text, that this would be another way to ensure that residents can access the information, and to translate all communication into at least one other language if a resident or business owner's first language is not English. Did I capture those?
Perfectly.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. President Flowers, I wonder if I could direct a question to Mr. Riley. I assume he's there.
Yes, he is. And you may direct a question through me to Mr. Riley.
Okay. In thinking about how to craft such a, a condition, I wonder if their workflow contemplates readily identifiable increments that they will work in, so that you can say, we want to give notice to people a week before work in that increment begins, or whether it's feasible to do it that way, or whether instead, we have to just fall back on every week or every two weeks, everyone who is adjacent or near, near to where work is going to happen will get a notice. So I'd like to be able to rely on that idea that there are these increments of work, but I want to make sure that, that we're not assigning more importance to that than, than will happen on the ground. So if Mr. Riley could give us some input on that, I, that would be helpful.
And Mr. Riley, I, I know where you're standing is where we've asked you to stand, but I wonder if you would want to come closer to the desk here, and then, this, this is the microphone that would pick you up. So if you just wanted to approach the desk here, I think it would pick you up better.
Ray, can you hear me?
I can.
Hi. So I, I, Tim, Tim's here, who's the PM, and he could probably speak with more clarity about increments. I actually think that using a, we have in the, in the memorandum of agreement a one, well, there's, there's two outreaches. There's a two-week look ahead for city officials and others. And there's also, every week, we do an additional outreach. This is, this is paragraph two. So the, pecking it to a weekly, or, you know, we could talk about a more frequent, sorry, but pecking it to that avoids the issue Ray brings up. I think it's a good, it's like, we don't, we may hit ledge, it slows down, or it speeds up, or whatever. So it's not necessarily 200-foot increments all the time. You want to plug in on that?
Yes, thanks. This is Tim O'Leary. So, and Counselor Rand is referring to, so that's probably our maximum amount of space that we could work in. In all likelihood, especially the downtown area, we may be working 20 to 40 feet a day, right to the council's point. So between 20 feet, 200 feet. And that's arbitrary figure during that timeframe. We have constant outreach with the butters, and sometimes even extended butters, if there's a business that's affected by the traffic flow. A lot of times, just knocking on doors. We also do that throughout weekly look-ahead news, news报道.
And we've, we've committed also in the MOA that representatives will make periodic stops to businesses, all instructions taken place. So that would be an ability to find out that's their first language.
Okay. So Counselor Rand, if you could comment, do you, do you think that if we write a condition that requires there to be weekly updates that include a two-week look ahead, and that those be communicated to residents within some radius of the work that is either ongoing or is anticipated in the next two weeks, would that be a suitable substitute for the, the 200-foot increment approach that, that you suggested?
Counselor Rand, if you want to respond to Mr. Marius?
Thank you. I think, you know, I think that those are, those are great conditions to have in place. I think the timing is fine. I, I think what I'm really looking for is something above and beyond what sort of has been done in the past, or even, I'll use this example, though it is the gas division, not the electric division, but even today, there was a constituent that had, had surprise staging in, in, in front of their house. So even with the greatest intentions of communicating ahead of time, it, I'm looking for a more concrete reassurance and really clear expectations of that communication, so that when, when Monday hits, we have a video in our inbox that says, here's what happened. Or when, you know, it, it's not, I don't want to be overly negative, but it hasn't been good enough. So I'm looking for something better than what's already been done or been established in the past. So the ti, I think the timing is important. I think the quality of the communication and the variety of ways to access information is really what I'm looking for as a condition.
So Mr. Marius, if you couldn't hear all of that, Counselor Rand said-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I forgot to ask you to come sit here. Ms. Kent did move, so this, this is to me, the rotating seat.
Sorry.
So Counselor Rand said that she's looking for something, the timing feels fine that was just discussed, but looking for something above and beyond what's been done. And just as an example that she shared, this was a, a National Grid gas, not electric, project, but there were residents who found themselves surprised by staging for a project that happened in front of their homes today, that they were not aware was going to happen. And so I think Counselor Rand was referring to that as an example of why she's looking for more concrete reassurance and clear expectations of what the communication will be, because what sort of is the norm hasn't been good enough. So the timing, she said the timing is important, but the quality and way, different ways to access the information is what she's looking for an assurance about.
Okay. Excellent.
Thank you. Counselor Rand, did you have any follow-up or any further?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Did you have one other item that you wanted to address with Mr. Marius? Another member of National Grid's team, I think, has a communication piece.
Hi, Dan Ellis. No, I wanted to just let the counselors know that on the project's website, the things that Counselor Rand had mentioned was having materials available in other languages, and that has been the case. It'll continue to be the case throughout the project's communications. Currently, right now, information is available in English, Spanish, and Portuguese, which we receive that information from the census data, as to the languages that were spoken. If there are other ones that we need to get materials translated into, we can, we can easily have that done.
Thank you. Counselor Rand, any follow-up? This is your communication item.
Thank you.
And would you like to come to sit in this chair?
Oh, yeah. And this is a really brief follow-up. I just wanted to say, since I have the opportunity now, to add Albanian to that list, please.
Albanian?
Yes. And then also, just to add that having the ability to translate on the website is fantastic. I would like people to receive the information in a language, in two languages, or the language that they have expressed to you through door-knocking. That is their most efficient language.
Yes, we can do that, as long as we're provided, you know, when we're knocking the door, if they say, you know, Albanian, or Spanish, or, I don't want to try and guess by seeing someone's last name what language they might be more comfortable with. So as long as we get the information, we're more than happy to comply.
Thank you. Thank you. And I think, thank you, National Grid members. I think that's very helpful. And then, as going forward, we'll resume picking up with just counselor comments. And then, Mr. Marius, if you have questions you want to direct to other members, we'll pick up again as we did.
Okay.
Counselor Rand, thank you. And I do want to mention, counselors, if there are conditions that you've been thinking of, that another counselor ahead of you has mentioned, I think for the sake of our working efficiently and Mr. Marius being able to keep track of all of our thoughts, I think we don't need to restate one another's thoughts. We'll just be happy that another counselor had your good idea as well. Is there another counselor who wanted to have an opportunity to talk about conditions or thoughts that you have at this point in the process? Counselor Hausmann, would you like to take a special chair?
Thank you, Counselor President.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Marius.
Good evening.
Yeah, just, just to be clear, because I'm not sure it was stated, but, but it probably was, but just to be clear, at least for, for my support, if the council were going to approve with conditions, all 23 of these conditions are, are what I think should be a minimum baseline of what the council is requesting. I do have some specific amendments to, that I would like to see on this list, and in, in no particular order, just for the sake of completeness, I'll say that the update related to amendments to the MOA, related to inflation, Delta configuration, and so forth, that the administration is, is apparently, has requested, I think, should certainly be part of what we are looking for in terms of amendments to the MOA. Counselor Rand did a terrific job on the communication piece. On your list, Mr. Marius, the number seven, rodent control. When we talk about something more specific, there has been a, a great deal of discussion and deliberation and progress made, I think, on what rodent control might look like. And that would include a program which incorporates the smart boxes, electronic zap boxes, whatever you want to call it, as part of the rodent control process. That seems to be a proven process in some municipalities, and seems to me to be a step forward that the city has been contemplating anyway, and we ought to enact it as part of this project. Talked about street repair. Mr. Riley has already agreed relative to the MOA, going back for a moment, that the missing streets of East Lothrup Cross Street and Boyle Street should be included. I think you also have that on your list, on number eight, Mr. Marius.
Uh huh. That's correct.
Yep. Inspections, and I apologize, I don't have the exact number on your list, but inspections relative to cracks in foundations and so forth ought to be both pre- and post-construction radon inspections, because if there are cracks, radon is certainly, can be a, a factor in, in health. Staging, number 11. I want to make clear, as part of the conditions, that no staging will be done within the perimeter of Central Cemetery. I believe it has in part been used for such things in the past. Number 13, related also to number 15, damage to shade trees, public shade trees. While I'm happy to consult with arborist, city arborist, and any input from National Grid, if there are any mature trees, and I guess we'd have to define what a mature tree is, if, that has to be, you know, that's damaged and has to be replaced, it should be replaced with a caliper of no less than six inches at the base, and include basically a two-year replacement look-back period, to make sure that that tree, replacement tree survives. And, again, I would want to consult with the city arborist on this, but I think trees might be damaged, but the damage might not show up to the tree until after construction. So even if the tree is not removed, there ought to be a look-back period allowed to the city arborist, who in his or her discretion could determine that the construction had a material impact on the health of the tree, and there should be replacement for that as well, under the same conditions I just mentioned. And then I think the last thing I want to mention is that there be, and I, I would rely on your, your, your guidance on this, that there be some sort of, whether it's a letter of credit, or a bond, a, you know, stipulated fund, something that would allow, if there are damages and residents have to make claims, or want to make a claim, that that claim process doesn't in effect, you know, is rendered ineffective due to the difficulty of a resident having to contend with a large organization on the other side of the, of the, of the claim with, for effective, effectively unlimited resources compared to the resident. And there ought to be some sort of claim bonding, or a, you know, damage procedure that evens the playing field and for residents who might have a claim. And I think, I think that's all I have at the moment. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
I do have a question, but I think I would like to direct it to Mr. Riley.
Okay.
But Counselor Hausmann, why don't you stay here?
Sure.
Because similar to with Counselor Rand, if there is any follow-up.
Sure.
Yes. Mr. Marius, you can go ahead.
Mr. Riley, the last, the last suggestion was that there be some sort of fund set aside to reimburse property owners for damages that occurred. And I'm wondering if you have any suggestions about how that might work?
Well, we, we have, we address this in the MOA and negotiate with the mayor's office already. And it's on paragraph four, for the, so, I don't know how you, there needs to be a process to determine fault, I suppose it is, and whether the damage is in fact due to construction or not. I'm not going to agree to, to set aside the money that's just going to be paid out to a claimant without that type of evaluation first. McCord, and I think you can ask people in Salem, they have a very mature and robust claims process that they've used. It worked successfully, I think, in Salem Project, which is a very similar type of project as here. So that's, that's, you know, we committed to ensure that, that our contractors would, would have that in place, and that's, that's one of the commitments in the MOA. But so that, that's one of my concerns. The other is, is really, it's sort of a technical legal issue. The more we direct McCord what to do, the less they become an independent contractor. So there has to be, we have to maintain some separation in that regard. If we're telling them exactly how you have to handle claims, that's a, that is an important legal issue for us. You know, again, I would encourage you to look, call, call, sort of your counterparts in Salem and ask them how they thought that worked, that project, because I think it looked successful.
If I may follow up?
Okay.
Aye. Go ahead, Counselor Hausmann.
Yeah, so 4B, 4 Surveys and Damage B says that the process relative to how to handle claims shall be in place prior to the start of construction. Mr. Riley, is your, do you think that the rest of paragraph 4B is that, is that statement of the process? Because it seems to me that it talks about it, but it doesn't actually lay out the process that a resident would go through, knowing upfront what that process would be before construction starts. So you're referring to, to McCord, if they're the general contractor. I'm not sure that, well, I don't think the council has. I'm not sure if, if the administration has actually seen what their process is to be able to evaluate it?
No, I don't think it, I don't think it details what McCord's process is. It really is a, it commits to informing the, the city about the claims. Obviously, we can't get into the nature of the claims or who the claim is, because those are potentially confidential issues. But we could say, you know, there have been X number of claims this week, or something, which we frankly don't expect. And we, it hasn't been past experience, but if there was one, we would say there's been a claim. And then, once McCord sort of adjudicated it, we'd, we'd let the council know what the outcome was.
So I guess what I'm, to clarify, I'm asking, asking that whatever that McCord process is, be disclosed. process is, be disclosed upfront to the council as part of the conditions.
We will ask. I don't imagine that's proprietary, makes sense, but I will take that away and ask.
Okay.
Mr. Marioris, do you have a follow-up?
Yes. Through you, a further question to mark. You directed our attention to the mechanism that is being used in the city of Salem, and I'm wondering if you can provide the council with a documentation of that process.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. I don't know if you have a response for Mr. Marioris.
This, this provision in the MOA is almost verbatim of what we had in the Salem MOA for the, for the prior project. So there was no additional information that we provided Salem than what we put in the Beverly MOA?
Nope.
Maybe I'm not understanding the question, but does that answer your question?
Mr. Marioris.
Actually, it doesn't. I get that your MOA with Salem and the MOA with Beverly contain similar language, but Salem appears to have built on that language and, and created a process for evaluating claims. And I'm assuming that that process is written down somewhere above and beyond what was in the Salem MOA. Am I incorrect in making that assumption?
Mr. Riley.
So I think this goes to Councilor Husband's request that we ask McCourt, if they're willing to share what their detailed process might be. And we'll follow up with that. But we didn't, we didn't provide that to Salem. I don't know that they, I don't recall them asking. There was a lot of discussion about this issue in Salem because of the proximity of houses and some narrow streets.
Oh, do you want to add?
Just a reminder that anyone who's addressing the council one way or the other, it should be done as Mr. Marioris has done, which is through me. So only I should sort of be directing us to back, the back and forth. Did you want to share something about this conversation?
Yes, I apologize. I'm a follow-up. The process for claims, if somebody wanted to submit a claim due to damage or for whatever reason, that will be posted, the step-by-step process will be posted on the project's website. It'll also be on signage, and there'll be a phone number that will be emailed out, and you can also email. There'll be a link on the website as well, and you can document that easily and provide that to the council.
Mr. Marioris, does that address some of what you were asking? Or do you have a follow-up?
Through you, President Flowers, I'm not sure I understand the response. Is the response that the details of the claims process in Salem is on a Salem website that is accessible by anyone, and we could just go and look at it?
No, that website, once the project was complete, you know, restoration was completed, that site went down, but I can, I can send through the, through your clerk, I can send her the process that was used for Salem, that is the same process that we would use for Beverly, and I believe we had submitted that in one of the documents. So I'm more than happy to provide that to the city clerk.
Thank you, and then that could be shared. Thank you.
And that can be shared for all of you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That.
Sorry, Mr. Marioris.
That seems like a sensible way for us to proceed.
Councilor Husband, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I do. To Mr. Marioris, Mr. Riley indicated that a fund would not be set up, that that was unacceptable for National Grid, and I wonder if you could, if not advise tonight, if that's possible, that would be great, but give some thought to a mechanism, really that addresses my concern about a level playing field in the, in the, you know, claim process, so that the unequal nature of the resources that a homeowner might have in relationship to a large organization on the other side of that claim does not disadvantage the homeowner because of the differences in resources. And that was part of my notion of having a fund which is specified, but if a fund is not the best way to go about it, some way certainly to level the playing field if a homeowner does make a claim. So I recognize it's a very open-ended way of expressing the goal, but if you could give that some thought, or unless you have thoughts on it right now.
Mr. Marioris.
Okay, so through you, President Flowers, I actually didn't hear Mr. Riley's comments to be exactly as you just characterized them, so maybe we can get some clarification from him. I understood what he was saying was that he would not, that National Grid would not agree to the creation of a fund unless there was a clear mechanism for determining the amounts and the, and the types of dispersments that would be made from the fund. In other words, it's not just a fund that would just pay out to people who make claims, but that there needed to be some kind of a process for evaluating those claims. And so if I did, if, so I do not interpret what he said to mean that there couldn't be a fund at all, so maybe since we seem to have heard him slightly differently, we could ask him to clarify.
Mr. Riley, would you like to clarify based on this question?
Sure. He, Mr. Marioris on the right, I don't see the benefit of having a fund set aside when the process of evaluating claims is going to be the same. It's not, we're not in a situation where, you know, where if the claim is married, we're not going to pay it, right? So that would be the case, like for instance, if you had, in my issue, you have a solar developer who you think might go belly up and leave all their stuff, then you have a letter of credit to make sure you can clean that up, right? That's not the case here, so I don't know that this option of a fund makes much of a difference. It's really, I think, we're concerned with the process to make sure that it's clear for everyone how to file a claim, how it would be handled, and how they get a response.
Councilor Husband.
So you're saying National Grid is creditworthy, that should not be a concern. But you also said, if I understood you right, that the claim process would go through your general contractor, McCourt, and so does National Grid stand behind a whatever, you know, quasi-adjudicatory process, arbitration, to make those payments? Or does it come out of McCourt?
Mr. Riley, if you would like to respond.
I believe it would come, I believe it would come from McCourt. Because they, they're the general.
So it's not a.
If they caused the damage, they would pay.
Councilor Husband.
So it's not a question of National Grid being creditworthy, it's a question of McCourt being creditworthy, which I don't have any information about. Well, it seems like on behalf of my constituents, I'd feel much more reassured if I had a sense of the creditworthiness of Mr. McCourt if there were claims that were made. So if I'm the council president of Mr. Marioris, if there's a way to determine that, that would be, I think, appropriate by asking for that information. It's great to have a process, but if McCourt, I mean, I don't know anything about the general creditworthiness of McCourt, but firms go belly up. There's a process, and National Grid says just now that they are not going to be paying the claim, it's going to be their general contractor, and the general contractor files for bankruptcy, that doesn't do my constituents any good, so.
Okay. Let's stick a pin in this issue. I have a couple of colleagues in my office who I'd like to consult with before figuring out what the best way to proceed is. And the, when we propose, when we do a draft for you, we will propose something, if that's what you want us to do. And we'll see where that takes us.
Okay. Thank you.
Any follow-up, Councilor Husband?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Marioris. Other councilors who had suggestions or thoughts on your mind that you wanted to share this meeting? Councilor Bowen. And then Councilor Sweeney, did I see your hand? We'll go Councilor Sweeney next. Councilor Bowen, you can come take the special chair.
All right. Yannis, can you hear me from here?
I can.
Oh, all right, Councilor Bowen, just.
Maybe a lean a little bit.
Just speak up, Councilor Bowen, and this seems like it will work.
Thank you. So first, just want to thank the other councilors for the thoughts so far, and I won't repeat them, but I will say that they are all things that I have heard from constituents and support finding some way to work in, if we can, in the direction that we're, that we're going. So one piece on the last conversation, because I had been thinking about that as well, since I believe our city ordinances do typically require a small construction bond of sorts for roadwork, and that that may be one of the pieces that MOA exempts this project from. So wanted to get some clarity on that and whether there was some similar sort of arrangement that would be suited to the scale of this project. So glad that there's going to be some homework on that. The other thing I've been thinking a lot about in terms of what we can just trust will happen versus what we need to put in writing in advance in a more transparent and enforceable way relates to things like damages, like the communication we've heard about. I've been trying to keep up with the start of this very project in Salem, knowing that there was a similar whole set of work in Salem that has been completed and that we're able to learn from, which I appreciate. There is work ongoing right now, and I'm not sure if I lived on Wait Street that I would know how to report damage through the website, for example, of the project that is now planning to continue over. So I think there may be already some things, some lessons learned from this phase of the project, which seems to be moving slowly enough that there are probably some, some learnings happening. So that's not necessarily a specific condition, but I think for all of these potential conditions we're thinking about, just seeing not even what, what worked or didn't work five years ago in Salem, but what's worked over the last five months in Salem or hasn't, and can we improve upon those things as it crosses the bridge? So in a general sense, that's, that's one of the things I've been thinking about and hope that we can put in place. Other sort of more specific thoughts that I haven't heard yet, one idea that came up through the public hearings that I would really like to see in some form is continued citizen engagement, sort of working group style, and I think this could build upon the kind of neighborhood by neighborhood communication that Councilor Rand was referring to, and, and I think mirrors what some other communities have already tried to do, and that there is clearly appetite for within Beverly. There are no lack of involved and informed citizens to step up and assist the Department of Public Services, the mayor's office, us as a council in monitoring that all of these plans are followed and weighing in at times when there may be questions that arise about what to do next. And I know the Ward Two Civic Association has been active and, you know, could be helpful in sort of channeling information. I know neighbors in Ward Four have been really active and organized, and so I think if we can find some way to condition future work on periodic involvement of a working group in some form, I think that would, would go a long way towards showing good faith and making sure that this conversation stays live and that the really good ideas that people have been coming up with have a sort of channel to keep going into. So that's, that's one. We talked in a previous meeting a little bit about the consulting engineer, who is really the city's eyes and ears beyond whatever working group, beyond whatever we know, beyond whatever neighbors are looking at, who's really the person who's paid to be on-site all the time, representing all of us in watching the work, weighing in as questions come up. And the, you know, city side feels comfortable that we can find someone for that role. I did still have that question about whether there's a cost escalation in the MOA, as was already mentioned, for paving, for that consulting engineer role. But I would also like to see some assurance that we'll have time to get that person in place before work actually begins. So I don't know if we can write a condition that says work, you know, ground cannot open until that person is hired. I don't know what that would look like, but that, that would make me more comfortable knowing that nothing will happen until that person is, is in place and playing their very important role. Other pieces, related to damage, I'm wondering if there is a precedent for talking about claims around lost property value or lost business during construction, or if there is only a process for physical damage to city property or to, to private property. That's a question that I know has come up in a few different contexts, whether home values could be damaged by the construction process itself or by concerns over proximity to this line, and also whether, you know, construction particularly right in our downtown corridor could hurt businesses that have already seen a lot of roadwork and the pandemic. So I don't know if that's another type of, of damage that can be documented. All of our businesses have been documenting their losses due to COVID, so they, they know that routine and can sort of have a track record of what business has been, and if that slows down when Cabot or Rantool or sections are closed off again, would love to see some consideration of that. So that's, that's something where I'm not sure if that's something that has been done in other communities. And then I think the last piece that I've been thinking about is those sort of sensitive spots along the route, and have been really grateful that some of those conversations have started happening. I know the, the National Grid team expressed that they, they often don't do that final detailed planning until they have a grant of location, but have been willing, given the scale of this project, to talk to the fire chief about what it will look like going right past the central fire station, and have talked to the Department of Public Services about a few other spots. And so I would just love for us to be able to see some of the outcomes of those conversations, again, sort of have that out for neighbors in those areas to know what has been agreed on, to handle those areas in front of the fire station, any place that's on a school bus route, any place that is on a popular walking route, that we have, those traffic management plans, I know, include some of the diversions for walkers as well. But I appreciate that some of those conversations are being had and would like us to have those written down as well as plans that, as the draft list of conditions we could write, states sort of holding the company to the plans would be a condition of, of the permit, so including those special locations and special treatment areas in the sort of plans that we have upfront. And I'm, I'm pleased to hear that the MOA relook might include some conversation about the configuration, including the delta configuration in, in all locations. I don't, I would. I don't, I would like to hear more about that and/or the minimum distances from residences that we've been looking for and, um, what happens in instances where the realities underground shift that route. Um, so, that's sort of my, I, I hadn't prepared a, a point on that because that's something new, but if that's something that we can look at, I know, sort of on my list has been any, anything that will give us more assurance that the safety of, you know, people's homes during construction and after is prioritized at least as much as the cost and convenience of small tweaks in the route. Um, so, to the extent we can get that upfront and/or just documentation of the, the process when things don't look underground the way they're expected to and small changes are going to be made, that we have the, the documentation of that process and that that process really prioritizes residents and businesses' needs. I think those are all the things on my list.
Thank you, Councilor Bowen. Uh, Mr. Marias, any follow-up questions or responses to Councilor Bowen?
Um, um, again, I think that through you, I'd like to pose a question to Mr. Riley, um, um, regarding the interference with, um, business resulting in lost business. Um, uh, I assume that, um, that it isn't a problem for National Grid to take the appropriate steps to minimize interference with access to businesses and, and what have you, uh, but I'm wondering, um, what your position might be with respect to, um, businesses who have documented loss of revenue, um, during the term of your, uh, project.
Mr. Riley, if you would like to respond?
For you, um, we, there's no limit on the, on the types of claims that can be filed, whether it's loss of business or, you may have mentioned, loss of property value, and people can make those claims, um, and we would evaluate the merits of those claims. Um, you know, they'd need to be, if, for instance, it was a loss of business, they'd have to be documentation and, you know, enough to be able to determine that it occurred during the time of, for that business or that type of thing. So, I don't really know how to, you know, address that beyond, beyond that, you know, documentation of the, the claim, just support the claim itself and really evaluate all that.
Okay.
And my colleague reminded me that as far as process, um, we do, so the, the claim would initially go to the court, and they will, will ask them to provide their process, and then, um, if it's denied, National Grid would look at it again with fresh eyes and make sure that it wasn't, or occurred, so we stand behind that.
Mr. Marias, any response or follow-up question?
No, I think that, uh, that's fine. I, um, wanted to make sure it was on the record that lost business claims, um, were part of the kinds of claims that, um, that could be brought. So, Mr. Riley's, um, response is exactly what I was looking for.
Thank you.
Can I make one process comment?
Uh, yes, go ahead, Mr. Riley.
Uh, I think it would, it would benefit to, um, this is sort of an earlier question, but I think it would benefit everybody to amend the MOA with these things, right, so that there's a count of, so there's not redundancy, it's right there, we can redline the document, uh, and things aren't in different places, and so it's not getting missed. We can just, everyone can live in one single document and know what the reliance is.
Mr. Marias, I'll direct that to you. It seems like a-
Okay. Well-
Legal process question.
Through, through you, I'm, I'm fundamentally fine with the idea that the, um, that some of these things could be addressed through an amendment to the MOA, um, but I am, I am concerned about the timing here, so, um, the, um, uh, because I, I think the council is, um, sensitive to the idea that it wants to reach a decision, um, and, um, and vote on a, um, uh, on a resolution of this matter so that it can move on. Um, the, um, um, and, um, I will note that Mr. Riley has, on a couple of occasions, requested that, um, uh, that, uh, we, uh, complete our work promptly. Um, so, I'm, um, I'm wondering, Mr. Riley, if you can, uh, help us out of that little conundrum. Uh, should we in fact be waiting until a, uh, MOA revision has occurred?
Uh, Mr. Riley?
President, I think, a couple thoughts here. He was, Mr. Marias was going to create a draft of something anyway, um, and my thought was why not just, you know, redline the MOA so that everyone can see what the proposed amendments are rather than have a separate document. Um, so that, whatever draft Mr. Marias was going to create was going to have to be reviewed anyway, and that was going to be a, a, I'm going to do another step in the process anyway. So, I don't see the difference as far as timing in that regard. Um, I guess that would be my-
Uh, Mr. Marias?
Well, through you to, um, um, Solicitor Williams, it sounds as though Mr. Riley is expanding my portfolio.
Uh, so, would you like me to speak to Counselor Flowers, or?
Yes, if you, if you would, Solicitor Williams, thank you.
Well, I think we might be exalting form over substance here a little bit, because in my mind, no matter what, it, it's, it's the council, it's with the council at this point in time, and there certainly are things that the Mayor's Office has asked Grid to amend in the MO, MOA, and, and since we started the meeting, I've, I've been reminded that, that the Mayor's Office did ask for an increase in the amounts in the MOA for the paving and the engineer for the city, um, as well as the police details. And, and I don't have a problem with amending the MOA for that. I guess I'm not sure I see the benefit. I'm open to it necessarily, and if the city council votes to impose conditions, what is the benefit then of turning around and putting that into an MOA that the, the chief executive as the city, for the city of Beverly signed? So, I'm just, I don't know, I think it's something to think about, but I don't think we need to decide it right now.
Thank you, Solicitor. Uh, that's appreciated. Uh, Councilor Housman, I want to go to Councilor Sweeney next, but did you have a, a point about this line of questioning? Would you like to jump in?
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Sweeney agreed to yield to me for just a quick moment.
And Council, I wanted to just be clear also, Councilor Bowen, you had no further follow-up?
Not at this point, yes, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Bowen. Councilor Housman, then we will go to Councilor Sweeney for your input on, uh, conditions or thoughts that you have.
Yeah, thank you. I, I, I was just basically agreeing with city Solicitor Williams that we not get tangled up in form over substance under a document that says something to the effect that if there are any inconsistencies between the conditions and the MOA, the, the language of the, uh, of the, uh, conditions will control, will simply harmonize if there's any conflicts. I, I recognize Mr. Riley's, Attorney Riley's desire to have it in one place, but it can be word drafted around, I think. Um, that's really the nature, nature of my comment, but if I may, while I'm here, follow-up very succinctly with Mr. Marias about, um, the damages piece of this. It occurs to me that a statement of what the burden of proof, uh, and the, the, the theory that's applied to damages should be made clear and agreed to. So, if the burden of proof is solely on the, on the homeowner, that obviously is a very different, um, way of dealing with damages than if, than if there's a more level playing field about the, the, who has the burden of proof. Um, and likewise, whether it's based on negligence or strict liability also would have a bearing. So, those, those legal theories about what is the basis of awarding or denying a claim would be very important in terms of leveling the playing field. Thank you very much, Counsel.
Thank you, Councilor Housman. Uh, let's go then to, uh, Mr. Marias, unless you have a response to Councilor Housman's comment there?
No, we're fine, fine, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Sweeney?
Uh, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
I believe Solicitor Williams addressed this in her response already, but just to reiterate from Mr. Marias, uh, building off of Council Rotundo's earlier line of questioning, if the matter's already taken care of in a revised MOA, that covers the need for, um, the revised cost of paving, but if for some reason it is not, I would like to make the request that a figure approved by the Director of Public Services be included in the grant of location. But it seems like that won't be necessary, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Sweeney. Uh, Mr. Marias, any follow-up to Councilor Sweeney's?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, other councilors who would like to weigh in at this time? All right. Oh, Councilor Bowen, yes?
Thank you. A, a slightly different, um, question. I know we had requested the stormwater management plans and asked that the, um, Department of Public Services review those, and they included some feedback back to us about sort of adhering to those plans. Are there any specific, you know, um, additions in the form of conditions that that feedback could prompt? Or is that the sort of condition where we would say, you know, adherence to the stormwater management plan as submitted, and that's, that's all the language there is? So, that's a question mostly to Mr. Marias.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Marias, could you hear Councilor Bowen's question?
I could hear the question, uh, but, um, I have to confess that, that, um, I'm not familiar with the comment that was made on the stormwater management plan. So, I'm taking it that there was a stormwater management plan that was submitted and a department head made, made a comment on it?
Yes.
That was provided to the council?
Yes.
Is that, is that correct?
Yes, and I think those were forwarded to your, to you, but we can, we can make sure that they, uh, are.
Okay. Um, yes, it would certainly be, um, my expectation that comments that were received, well, certainly, if a comment is, that we received, we've reviewed this and it's exactly what we were expecting and it's, uh, perfectly fine, then the condition is simply that you, that you, uh, um, must comply with the plan. If the, the comment comes back and says, "This is mostly okay, but here are one or two things that we want to make sure are, are clarified," um, then an appropriate condition is to adopt the plan with some additional requirement to make sure those things are clarified. So, I'm sorry that I can't ans, answer the question specifically, but I hope that the general idea will come across.
Great, yes, that's, that's helpful, and I think it's mostly relevant to, as we review a, a potential list of conditions, for us to be able to know what we're going to check back against essentially. So, yeah, don't need the specific answer on that one necessarily at the moment, but just that structure is helpful.
Thank you, Councilor Bowen, and we'll double-check, I'll work with Ms. Kent to make sure those letters from department heads were placed on the city website, um, that the council received, but we'll make sure that they got to, uh, both you, Mr. Marias, and to National Grid, so that everyone has the same document in front of them.
Okay.
Uh, councilors, other comments at this time? Uh, so, I would like to entertain a motion just to take a five-minute recess.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, take a five-minute recess, and we'll be back at 7:30, please. Welcome back, everyone. We're back. I do want to just take a moment. There were a few things I just wanted to, some housekeeping items that I just wanted to mention. The first is that I wanted to acknowledge on the record receipt through Mr. Marias of response from National Grid to his last communication to National Grid. That has been shared with the City Council. It will also be available on the city website as we have been doing, so that the public can access documents. I also wanted to mention on the record our receipt of a letter from Ms. Alyssa Raymond Reed on behalf of residents. That's also been shared with counselors, as well as Mr. Marias and National Grid. That was the letter that was pertaining to suggested conditions that residents affected by the route have been working on together and talking about. So I would like to acknowledge those, so that they can become part of the official record on this matter, and Ms. Jacobson has been working to get all of this, all the documents onto the city website. As a reminder, if people are newer and joining in on the process, or haven't been accessing this sort of central location to see the documents as we've been going, it's on the city's main website, beverlymass.gov, and there's a central, at the top, a central location where you can click for all the information about this National Grid project. And so that's where, if you're following along, if you're following us at home, you can find those documents there.
I'm not sure that Mr. Riley did get that letter, because I think we held them.
Oh, thank you, yes. As a point of awareness, they're being collected will come from our solicitor's office. Yes. Ms. Oldmixon, would you help us out here, please? All the way up here, though, if you would, Ms. Oldmixon.
I just saw.
Sorry, I might have missed something, but I believe the letter from Ms. Alyssa Raymond Reed, Mr. Riley did get that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Oldmixon, for that clarification. So I believe we've come largely to the end of tonight's sort of conversation among counselors raising conditions, but, oh, Mr. Marias, I'm sorry, I don't want to skip over you.
Okay. I did want to touch on a couple of items that I didn't hear any comments on, and I just wanted to check in on, just so that I have a sense of where the counselors stand on it. One has to do with the staging, storing, and lay-down area. There has been a site identified, assessors map 5637, and the access to that site, I guess, is via Brimble Avenue. It appears, at least to me, I've never been to this site, but looking at Google Maps, it appears to me that it is adjacent to residential apartment complex. I did not hear a single comment from anybody about this, but I'm curious as to what sort of conditions you may be interested in including in approving that lay-down area.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marias. Counselors, would anyone like to respond? Counselor Rand, and Counselor Rand, if you would, switch with Ms. Kent, please.
Otis Road, he's going to be talking about. I mean, that's where everyone uses for staging. It's a big.
Can we just repeat, can we have the site repeated again, please? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the.
Oh, Mr. Marias, can you repeat the specific staging and lay-down area? Counselor Rand just missed the specific.
It's identified in National Grid's submission as being a city's assessors map 5637, 56-37.
And Solicitor Williams, would you like to, you've raised your hand on the screen?
Sure, yes, and Attorney Marias is correct. For people who know the area, it's a location near, it's adjacent to where the city has the new solar array facility off of Brimble Ave. So Otis Road runs back there, and the Stranzis own a parcel next to our old cap landfill, and I believe that's where the lay-down area is.
Thank you. Counselor Feldman, this is your ward?
Yes, thank you. I do know that through you.
Oh, Counselor Feldman, I guess will you take the special chair?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Just realized the solicitor, Mr. Marias can't hear you as well as I can. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. There does, to someone that does not know the area that well, it does appear to be adjacent. However, there is an access road that is parallel that I presume will be the open lot and solar field area, the capped landfill of the city, that quite frequently is used for that purpose that does not conflict in terms of traffic with Broughton Drive, which is the main road for the apartment complex in that area. Does that make sense from your perspective, Mr. Marias?
Yes, so you don't think that there is any need, for example, for visual screening or noise screening, or limited hours, or whatever? You think the two are sufficiently separated?
Counselor Feldman?
I would have to look more closely at the, is the, I don't have it in front of me now, is the entrance and access to the staging area Otis Road?
Mr. Riley, do you have the answer for this question?
Yes, I believe it is, yes.
All right. At the same moment, every attorney in the room said yes, but Mr. Riley, every attorney on screen and in the room, but Mr. Riley.
So, Madam President, I was just told we are not using that site for our lay-down area. So.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what he just said.
National Grid is not using that site for our lay-down staging area. We have a site in Peabody.
Yeah, and McCourt has a site in Peabody.
I'm sorry.
McCourt has a site in Peabody, so they will not be using. So, problem solved.
Well, maybe.
Maybe.
Counselor?
Through you.
Yes.
Can I request that Mr. Riley provide us some information about the location of that site, and specifically how vehicles will travel from that site to the project route?
Yes.
Thank you. And, Mr. Riley, will you provide that through our city clerk? Thank you.
Well, can I add one other question?
Yes.
Thank you.
You may.
More of a process question, I was just figuring this is a solicitor. We haven't seen Mr. Marias's conditions, and not sure how the wording's going to come out of what we've discussed tonight, but would National Grid have to review and comment on those before they were formally finalized or adopted?
Mr. Marias, can you hear that process question?
I heard the question, and through you, my response is this. You haven't seen any conditions written by me yet, because I haven't written any yet. All I did was provide a list of topics, and if you haven't seen the list, it is a public record and can be provided to you. As far as, as, when I produce a draft, it is my intention to provide it to the council in open session. It too will become a public record, and I would think the council would be wise to hear whatever comments you may want to have on it before making its, taking its final vote. But that's at their discretion, but as I say, I think it would be wise for them to hear what you have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Marias. And, yes, the list of topics that Mr. Marias referred to that we've been discussing in open session, Ms. Kent, will you make sure to forward those, please, to Mr. Riley, but also let's forward them to Ms. Jacobson, so that they can be included with all the other documents? Counselor Hausman, I saw your hand. Counselor Feldman?
Are we good with Otis Road? Just wanted to make sure before, if that is the plan to not use that staging area for what Mr. Riley just conveyed, are we all set with the conditions in talking about Otis Road and Brimble Avenue? Mr. Marias?
Yes, unless I'm missing something. If they're not going to use that for a staging area, then it's not relevant to our proceeding, and we don't have to write any conditions about it.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Feldman. Counselor Hausman, did you have an item? And then we'll return to Mr. Marias's last questions in our last 20 minutes here.
Yeah, I just want to be very sort of technically clear. Mr. Riley said there was a location outside of Beverly. He said that there was, they were not using Otis Road, and you confirmed that you will be not using for your lay-down area any location in Beverly, including Otis Road. There's a difference between saying, "We'll be here," and not, and saying, "But we won't be anywhere else in Beverly."
Would someone from, Mr. Riley or someone else from National Grid, would you like to respond?
Yes.
Mr. O'Leary, thank you.
Yes, Tim O'Leary. At this time, on construction projects like this, they're subject to change sometimes the conditions to these staging sites, depending on the land order, commercial business. So at this time, we're not in a position to say that we will not be utilizing your property in Beverly at some point in time during the construction, which includes our own property on Griffith Street.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. So, Mr. Marias, if I may, would it be fair then to include a condition that would say that should National Grid make a change that they were going to use a staging or lay-down area in Beverly, the council would be notified in advance of that being enacted?
Yes, it would be fair to say that, but I think it would probably also be fair to say that any such lay-down area would be subject to your approval.
Thank you.
Through you, to Mr. Marias?
Yes, Counselor Hausman, and then we'll move back to his questions.
Yeah, so the question of pre-construction, noise, movement, and so forth ought to be addressed in some fashion if there is going to be a lay-down location in Beverly. I don't have the language of the MOA in front of me, but I know there was some language that addressed that, so just to sort of close the loop on this question of the lay-down area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Hausman. Mr. Marias?
Okay. The other item that was only spoken about generally, and I'm not sure I have enough guidance to draft something, is the idea of providing periodic updates to city staff and the council. And specifically, I wonder if council members want to specify how frequently they want updates and in what level of detail.
Thank you. Counselor Bowen?
Thank you. So I heard from Counselor Rand the request that detailed communication about progress and look ahead happen on a weekly basis to the neighbors affected in that upcoming two weeks and to the council, and I think it's already in the MOA that those project updates are weekly to city staff. And I would support that frequency and scale. And then the additional piece that I think is related but slightly different is to establish a working group of city staff, counselors, and abutters, residents, and businesses on the route to act as, you know, both a recipient of that same communication, but also with periodic, kind of more planning, working group-style meetings to address any issues that are coming up.
Thank you, Counselor Bowen. Mr. Marias, does that provide you with more guidance?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Marias, any other questions that you had for us?
No, I'm good now.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Vice President Rotundo would switch seats with me, and he'll ultimately call for the vote to direct Mr. Marias, or as to what we would like to direct Mr. Marias going forward. I'm actually just going to move over one seat. We're doing it this way today. So for those who may be following who are newer to this process or parliamentary procedure, which the city council is using, the city council president can't speak or offer opinion on a matter before the council when sitting in the president's seat. So I am switching with Vice President Rotundo. I won't switch back until we conclude this vote, and this is to allow me to be able to speak for a moment as a counselor. I did just want to, as my other counselors have said, not reiterate conditions that have already been talked about, but I did want to circle back to the letter that was received from residents by the council, and, Mr. Marias, you also have that. And so just support for incorporating resident voices as thoroughly as possible. Definitely supportive of Counselor Bowen's suggestion that is being lifted up, or I would say amplified, from residents themselves about ways to involve residents in the process as we continue to go forward, particularly because I think those of us who have been part of this process now all along are aware that at the beginning of the process, one of the problems that unfolded was how little residents were being informed and their voices were being heard. And so I think to the extent that we can use a working group, to the extent that we can take a look at the conditions that we received from residents themselves, some of them do overlap with what I heard counselors say tonight, but I did want to just make special mention of a few that I noted. One of them being, we talked about sensitive areas, Counselor Bowen did, and I just wanted to make note that, in my view, one of those kinds of sensitive areas would be residents with young children, potentially residents who have different medical concerns, whether it be that they may need to get to medical appointments where work is happening in front of their home, or we have heard from residents who have concerns about different medical conditions or procedures that they have themselves, and so I would include those, I would hope we could include those, I guess, as sensitive areas. Also, thinking about residents who work from home and what that might mean in terms of noise and working hours and light kind of mitigation. I know on those topics, there was one about light, light when the work is happening, so what time lights can come on for, if there's construction lights being used. But being thoughtful about what time young children might be going to bed and what that might mean for construction and lighting, and people who, it's much more common, I think, than ever for people to work from home, and so what impact that might have on residents. And I would just suggest that one way to really find out where those kinds of sensitive areas are would be within Counselor Rand's suggestion about the kinds of direct outreach that would include finding out some of those items about residents. And I think we had also, this is my last. And I think we had also, this is my last, uh, one I want to lift up that I noted, that I noted, was we had talked about, um, considerations for residents who may need to be temporarily relocated, um, if the, if the work happening outside their home is disruptive to their ability to work from home, or, uh, needing to be moved temporarily, and so just making sure that where residents, if that, that is happening, and if they're being accommodated somewhere that it's, uh, place is workable for their, their family, their work situation, medical situation, um, the particularities of, of their life. That's all.
Mr. Marias, is there anything else to follow up? Did you, um, understand all the questioning and comments from, uh, President Flowers?
I think I understood it all, if it turns out I misunderstood, we'll find out once, once I start writing, won't we? Um, the, uh, uh, no, I think I've got a good handle on, on, on the comments that all the councilors have made, and, um, so I'm satisfied that you can conduct a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Marias. I would entertain a motion to direct Mr. Marias and his team to draft an approval with conditions as discussed, to submit to the city clerk's office by noon on Thursday, June 2nd, for consideration by council at the 6-6 meeting, June 6th meeting.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries nine to zero. I, do I need to, um, motion? I motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.